At 6:30, we'll call the meeting to order. Could you do the roll call, please?
Megan.
Here.
Brian.
Present.
Brooks. Rob. Alyssa. Michael. And Barb.
Here. We have the agenda in front of us. There's a motion to approve.
I bring second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor? Post? Okay, moving on to the consent calendar.
No motion to approve. There we go.
Facet second.
Motion and second to approve the consent calendar. All in favor? Post? Okay, moving on to the minutes. Everybody have a chance to look at the minutes?
Tote second.
Motion and second to approve the minutes. All in favor? Post? Okay. Now's the time for public comment. If anyone is here that would like to speak to the commission on any item, they are welcome to come forward. And you have up to five minutes. If you're on the agenda, you can wait for that time period if you'd like. Is there anybody here that would like to make public comments? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move to the conditional use application for 1520 East Liberty.
So, the applicant is here, but... So, this begins on page 13 in the packet. This, a few months back, we passed the language that you can see highlighted on page 19, allowing a second driveway and a multi-frontage lot. So, this applicant's primary frontage is, once I can find the little picture, is Liberty Circle. He is seeking a secondary driveway off of Birch.
And if you could just state your name and address, please?
Uh, my name's Cody Swenson. I live in 1520 East Liberty Circle.
So, why don't you just give us a little history of what you're looking for?
Alrighty. So, I'm looking to build a second garage on my property. Uh, I actually applied for a variance last fall, uh, but you guys said you were working on this new ordinance, so we decided to wait until that passed. Um, and then I also changed the plan to fall more in line with this new ordinance. I did have a wider driveway, but brought it down to that 24 to match the ordinance. But yeah, just looking for this conditional use permit to approve the second driveway, so I can build a garage.
I have to ask if the... If the garages now exceed the square footage of the house? Was the attached garage then? Would you add those two together? Only the non-attached one counts? Okay, thanks.
I think the main floor of my house is about 1,300 square feet.
That, um, the road, I think it's Birch, that goes north there, is there any changes that would be coming to that? It's a new road, is there anything like... Lights going in or anything that would cause problems with it?
Any more questions for the applicant?
And I can see the diagram, but just so it's on the recording, the setbacks shown on this diagram are all legal? Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Make a motion to approve it?
I bring second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve the conditional use on East Liberty Circle. Any more questions? Not, we'll take a vote. All in favor? Post? Thank you for waiting and coming back to us again, and hopefully this'll take care of it for you.
Perfect, thank you, guys.
Thanks for coming. Moving on, we have a home occupation permit for North Teton Drive.
The occupant of the owner of 504 North Teton Drive is looking to operate a high-end women's consignment shop out of the basement of the home. And home occupation requires a conditional use permit.
If you'd just give us your name and address, please?
Absolutely. Norma Spanton, 504 North Teton Drive.
Just go ahead and tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Absolutely. Um, so, I would like to have a consignment shop in the basement of my home. Um, I honestly wanted to go all-in and get a storefront right away. However, my, um, level-headed husband and my sister, who's an accountant, said, "How about we just start small and see how this goes first, before we jump, uh, in the hot boiling water and sign a three-year lease? So, let's try small and do it in the basement first." Um, I already have 20 consignors. Um, and so, I wanted to... So, we are looking to do it in the basement first and, uh, set it up there, see how it goes. And, uh, after that, we, um, are hoping to have a brick-and-mortar here in town.
Will you be hosting any events or anything to have people in there?
Um, if we do, it would probably... Not, not, not planning on, like, any huge events. Um, I was thinking about if we ever do, maybe like a girls' night, um, maybe like five, six gals come over. If they want to have an hour or two shopping, just a exclusive, five or six girls come over. Um, I might put together a charcuterie board with... I'm, I'm in recovery, so it would be a non-alcoholic type of, type of an event, but, um, that would probably be it. But other than that, no. And it won't be full-time, because I work full-time. Um, so, it would be, uh, part-time. I'm thinking of Saturdays, um, obviously, and then a couple nights a week, and then by appointment only as well. I'm fashioning it after another gal that I often go to in, uh, West Sioux Falls, and that's how she got her start as well. She started in the basement of her home.
Will you have any designated parking in your driveway for them?
Yes, we have, um, a large driveway, so there's probably about... Well, there's four spots to park in the driveway. Um, and then there's about, probably three spots in the front of the house to park to.
I have a question for staff. As long as I've been on the board, I don't think we've issued any, um, of these for retail. Are there any retail home occupations that you're aware of on, on record?
Uh, I don't have the list in front of me, but I know from recent precedent history, when Mr. Reed came in wanting to do his hydro dipping and gun sales out of his house on, on Lark, that was denied with your stated reason being it was retail sales. You did approve a home occupation for a mechanic out of his garage. And daycares get approved pretty frequently. Those are the ones that come to mind. I, I imagine there are, whether they have gone through the process, I don't know. We, we do have a list. Nothing stands out to me, but I haven't perused the list recently.
And I would have no, um... I do not plan on having any staff. I am the staff.
I have some concerns about starting precedents for retail, because that initiates a higher level of traffic than service-oriented businesses or businesses by appointment in residential neighborhood. Would you consider doing this by appointment only? Rather than walk-in?
Would you consider... I, I could do that, or would you consider just Saturdays 10 to 3 and appointment only? Or if the only way to do it is appointment only, then yes, I would do that? Being as all these women have already taken me all their clothing, this is my last hurdle.
Well, and we appreciate you coming in and doing it this way. We really appreciate that, because we know that that doesn't always happen, so thank you.
Yep, I just, I wanted to do everything by the book.
I know our ordinances, uh, talk about the amount of space within the house the business can use. What is the... What is it, 50%?
So, a home occupation is an accessory use. So, to, the line, the rough line between accessory and principal use would be 49.9 versus 50.1. So, it has to be secondary to it being a house.
To the living.
So, it has to be smaller than where, where that line is.
So, the, the part that the business takes up has to be less than the part you live in.
Oh, it's less?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's much less.
That's my question.
Uh, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this? Have we had any, um, anyone comment, Patrick?
I have not heard any comments on this particular application.
So, this one is a little tricky one for us, because we have not done this in the past. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, I think, uh, an example we've talked about in the past is when we've had applications for someone doing a hair salon out of their home. We've in fact asked about products they would sell, because it mentions, you know, um... No retail sales are permitted from the site other than incremental sales related to the services provided. And that's where we've talked about someone doing that could sell a few products on the side, and people that are there for the services could also purchase those. But, um, if it was flipped and it was someone wanting to sell hair care products out of their home solely, I... To me, that's obviously like retail sales. So, I'm, I'm still kind of hovering around the retail part of this too, because in, in my, my opinion, and the way I read our ordinances here and our language, it, it's sort of saying that a strictly retail sales isn't, by this language, suited for a home occupation. That's what I'm still processing here, so...
And interestingly, and I don't know if this makes a difference, in my contract that they sign, none of the clothing belongs to me. It belongs to all of the consignors. So, I don't know if that makes a difference either, because until it's sold, I mean, it doesn't belong to me. It belongs to them till sold. So, I'm selling for them, so...
That's still one of the transactions taking place.
Uh, yeah. Yeah.
So, to get back to what Brooks said, if you look at 151511G, it states, "Unless expressly permitted by the conditional use permit, no retail sales are permitted from the site other than incidental sales related to the services provided." Conceptionally, under the ordinance, the ordinance would allow you to permit retail sales. You just would have to do so expressly, but this board has kind of established its own policy above and beyond that. So, that's... So, you technically can. It's just where you want the policy to be. Thank you for that. If you're...
There would be no... Um, if I did evening hours, um, which I'm not pl... I mean, that would be if it was by appointment only. That would be six to eight. Um, but I was planning more to do Saturdays 10 to 3, but if people wanted to do appointment, then it wouldn't be past 8 o'clock at night. Yeah.
With your, with your goal being to move into a brick-and-mortar eventually, how much volume would it take for you to get to that point? So, kind of just looking at what, what's your target of volume? How many customers a day? Or how much would you need to get to that point? What are we anticipating?
It's not so much of volume. I wanted to give it one year to see what the reception of it would be. Um, that, to me, would give me a really good idea of how the reception of customers would be, because even the reception of what I got just posting, that I was thinking about opening, I, I put one ad out, and the amount of response I got for consignors was insane. Um, so, and they're all so excited for the opening, because I, it's slated for August 3. And so, everyone is so excited for it to open. So, I'm not so much about volume, per se. I just want to see if this is something that's actually going to have interest, and how much interest for a year. Um, and then I will make... Because it's not that I don't have the financial backing there. I do, but three years is a long time for me to make a commitment if I don't see that this is something that would really take off. So, I wanted to do it for a year, just to see how, if, if it would be something that would, that would actually take off. And I want it to be in Brandon. I don't want it to be in Sioux Falls.
I, I, I appreciate what you're doing. I appreciate you coming in here and doing it the right way. I liken this to, kind of like a rummage, like a rummage sale year-round. Um, you know, rummage sales bring a lot of turnover-type traffic and, you know, like during the Brandon rummage, you know? And it's, it's short time, so I think we deal with it. But, you know, there's incidents where, you know, people park in front of people's driveways and things like that. And that's, that's the kind of thing that I want to avoid setting a precedence for. How many people do you... Since you're the only employee, uh, how many customers would you anticipate being able to handle at a, at a single point in time? If you're doing it, doing this in your basement, in terms of assisting them and helping them and accommodating them?
Um, you know what? I, I don't know. Um... I'm thinking probably six, seven, eight at a time. Um, I, I, I don't know, because this is, this is new. Um, so, I'm not gonna stand up here and pretend like I know, because I, I don't. Um, I do know that I have my, my husband, who's been completely on board, which is surprising. Um, he's been completely on board with this, with me, so if I needed an extra hand, he's there. I don't, I don't, in any way, shape, or form, anticipate that there's gonna be just bundles of people coming in, and I'm not gonna be able to, to handle them all. I have a background in retail. So, I, I, I don't, I don't think I can answer that fairly, to be honest with you. I, I, again, I've, I have background in retail. I can handle quite a few people, but I, I don't know. I don't know. Um, and I'm, I'm sorry, I have to disagree with you. This is not like a rummage sale. This is not the quality of types of stuff that we're bringing in at all. Um, not that some people's rummage sales aren't really good quality, but it's, it's an upscale, um, uh, second-hand store. If you, it's, and, and it's called... Yeah, it's... I kind of take a little offense to that, because it's...
Yeah, that wasn't intended in terms of the type of product you have.
No.
It's intended in terms of the traffic.
Right, but I...
The number of people coming and going, and additional cars, and, you know...
But, but even with that, I, I have to somewhat disagree, because with a rummage, people, um, they're like, "Oh, my goodness, it's just a couple of days. We're just gonna be there a couple of days." This is something that's not gonna be just a couple of days. People are gonna know that it's, it's an established business, and they're gonna see when my hours are, or they're gonna make an appointment. So, it's not gonna be like, "Oh, we gotta get there just this one time." You know, so I, I guess I have to respectfully disagree a little bit there.
Right. However, if this was a business in a business, um, parcel, we would require you to have a certain number of parking spots per square footage of your business.
Okay.
And you don't have that, and that's the additional load on public streets in neighborhoods where there's kids on bicycles. That's my concern.
I see. I understand.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, ma'am, could you come up front, please, and ask your question, so we can get on the recording and have, with your name and address, please? Thank you. Surprisingly, people do listen to these meetings, so, you know?
Debbie Greenizer, and I'm just down the street at 408 North Teton.
Thanks.
So, one question is, is there a separate entry into the, into your basement? There will be. For your protection. Yes, there is. Okay. And what would the name be? It's called The Sequel, A Fashion Exchange. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I, I guess the struggle I'm having is I certainly appreciate that you want to have it in Brandon. I'm, I, I love that concept. It, it sounds like a fun thing. I guess I'm trying to, um, and I don't vote, so I'm just trying to figure out in my mind how we could do this when we didn't do the other one. That's the challenge I'm having. Do we change the ordinance? How, how can we get... How can we maneuver it? Not that we didn't want, want to do the other one either, and we tried, but... Are we gonna have more of these? And is it something that we want to have happen in our neighborhoods? That's the other issue. You know, we have been very protective of our neighborhoods with the kids and stuff. So, we have to think ahead for that.
I'm also concerned about the retail aspect of it. I know the one, the other one, we turned down, guns were involved, but it, it... There's all kinds of things it could be. You know, it could be fishing lures or soda pop, or it could be anything. But whenever we have something that draws people to the houses so that they're parking in the street and, and, uh... And there is... There is, what do I want to say? Uh, things that homes don't usually have that businesses do have, but now it's in a neighborhood instead of in a business. You know, then it also is, uh... Can be unfair to our people who pay for a storefront, because they're going... They're paying the rent and the, you know, uh... All the regulations that come along with having a storefront. But maybe somebody is in their house doing fishing lures and, you know, or whatever. So, it's... I, I, I think it... There can be aspects of it that are unfair to the neighbors, also unfair to people who, who have storefronts. And I, I'm not sure I want to do precedents and then have people in the future come in and want to sell jet skis out of their house or something, and we have to tell them, "No." You know? So, I, I'm struggling with this a lot.
Yeah, I guess I'm struggling with you. I just, I don't see how, how you can have enough volume to run it as a business with not having an impact on the neighbors. There's, you have about 40 feet of frontage, not including your driveway for parking. Yeah, I know you have a couple of spots in your driveway, but then you only have about one, maybe two spots in front of your house, and to get that kind of volume without then parking in front of your neighbors' houses and things like that...
I've talked to my neighbors next door, and they don't have a problem with it.
But it does impact them, and if they move, the new buyer is very unlikely to research that property well enough to think, "Oh, they're probably running a business out of their house. They're gonna be parking in front of my house." And then they come home with their camper and their boat, and they can't park in front of their house, and, and then, and then, and then. So, residential property is, is something that we, we protect pretty heavily in Brandon. And retail is a different zoning for a reason. It's because of these impacts. And I, there just, there isn't room here, but, um, even if there was room, it still does have impact on the, on the neighbors. And to get the volume that you need, it would, we would have to impact them.
Other comments?
I would make a motion to deny the request for the conditional use permit. I'd bring second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny the request. Any more discussion? Call for, um, all in favor? Post? So, um, that, that's a case where, unfortunately, the rules work against us, and we're just kind of stuck.
This goes to... Does this go to the council first?
So, there is a right to appeal to the city council in 1522-2 in the Brandon zoning ordinance, roughly on page 134, depending on which copy you have. I know it's been updated from, since the book I have, so things may shift around a little bit. Basically, to do that, you have five working days to file an appeal with myself. It has to be in writing. You can do that by email. You can stop by, just a letter. You have five working days, so that is next Thursday, with Friday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So, we just need to know then, and then it'll get scheduled for a, an appeal to the city council. A notice would have to go out again, so it takes a little bit of time, but we need to know within five working days. It does not. The hearing was held, so no. Correct. But you do have the right to appeal. I just need to know by Thursday.
Alright, thanks.
So based on this discussion, is there any movement among the commission to change our ordinance? Or are we comfortable with protecting our so-called residential areas? Do we still feel comfortable with that?
I am. I still feel that there's other things that we've discussed that fit the home occupation better, and I I personally still feel like a retail sales situation isn't well suited to that. I agree. My my concern with with starting to permit retail is the volume of traffic um in in residence. As Mr. Mr. Tote said, um it starts to impact other people, not just people in 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 that home's driveway, so. You know, it's not like it's not like a daycare or a service where you might have one or two people at a time. When you start talking six or eight, you know, that 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 starts to impact your neighbors.
Any other comments? Uh, the unfortunate thing is that she did it right. She probably could have ran it quietly, and we would have not been the wiser, and I feel feel really unfortunate. It's really unfortunate that when you try to do it right, we're still. Uh, the commission was, I think, stuck on that. Uh, you know, I don't see how we could get around it, so. Alright, moving on to the TIF district.
One thing to note for the record on the last one, there is both the appeal to the city council, as well as there is an appeal under South Dakota law eleven dash four dash twenty-five. Basically, you can appeal to court. There's certain time limitations in there. The appeal of the city council, of course, does not waive that. They would run concurrently. So in the event she goes back and listens to the recording, you do have that avenue of appeal as well. So if that's the route you go under South Dakota law, you I think it's thirty days, but you'd wanna check for sure, and so both avenues are available to you.
Thanks, Patrick. Hi.
And I wanted to just, I wanted to clarify one thing or or confirm one thing. At an appeal, you're uh, the person doing the appeal is not allowed to introduce any new information. It has to be the information that's already been presented. Is that correct?
That is correct. So it's basically a rehearing of the same information.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Quinn Reimers. I'm with Collier Securities in Pier. Uh, you probably used to see Toby Morris up here. He had a family matter to take care of. Um, so this is uh, this TIF district is very similar to that of Aspen Ridge, um, commercial, single-family, multifamily. Um, so when we go through the process, we have to send in the legal description, the all that's going on within the TIF district, the commercial, single-family, multifamily. Then uh, the Department of Revenue then classifies it how how they see fit, and that is economic development in this uh case, so. Uh, we have that letter. That is in the TIF plan. That'll be on the last page. Um. But uh, and we had sent that into the county to get a base value as well. Um, but uh, the I talked to Brian Reed this morning. Uh, I noticed that I didn't put a a boundary map in there for the, okay, you have it. Okay, that's good. Yep, that is, yep. So that is just a meets and bounds, essentially. The the legal description is the basic form there, so. The notices have been had been sent out for today's uh deal at the appropriate time, and Brian had talked to those entities as well. Um, I will keep this short, but I just wanted to see if there's any questions uh at all before get out of this.
So the TIF just applies to the commercial and the multifamily. Is that correct?
So the commercial, the multifamily, and I believe are to develop single-family, yes. That's that's kinda what we did in the Aspen Ridge project as well, so. Yeah.
Just for the benefit of the audience or people who are watching this. Tell us where this is. This is just west of the river on the south side of Holly Boulevard.
Yep, yep. Um, you want, would you like to explain that, Steve? Steve Van Buesker, he's the developer here, so he'd be better to explain that one.
Yes, good evening. Thank you uh uh for being here tonight. So uh, it's this, we're calling it the River Park Edition. So this is the area between uh the Big Sioux River, the, you know, the park system, and the Eagle Creek, which is directly to the west, and the bluffs are a little bit west and and touches the south end of this, so it's uh um it's the in uh the last little gap piece that we've got in the the community. It's showing right up there. We've got it all plotted out with uh the minor plots up there that you can see on the screen as well, so. Uh, should be a a a number of houses around the edge that are not part of the TIF, uh uh some uh some nicer houses with some, you know, big views in there. Then the R two area where the hand is right now on the, I think it might be track two. My eyes aren't that good, but where the hands at up there right now. Uh, that's the R two area, and then commercial and multifamily up along Holly Boulevard.
And could you just walk through what a TIF is a little bit? There's there's gonna be people listening.
No, absolutely. It's a it's a tool for economic development, essentially, you know, in today's economy, it's pretty difficult to do any large-scale development for growing cities. Um, the district itself is, it takes the legal description, essentially the boundary that you have in front of you. And that is, it takes the taxes from the homes, the buildings, and it goes to the city, the county, the city, and the city passes it back to the developer to, I guess, reimburse them for the costs that would otherwise not have happened without the TIF, right, the development. So I know there's the TIFs are very confusing. There's plenty of questions to be asked. I know it's a very broad uh subject, so. I I don't know if that was a good enough explanation, but that's essentially the broad uh synopsis there, so.
Yeah, so it impacts city and county. It does not impact the school district because they're made whole.
No, it doesn't. It does not impact the school district. It's uh in in the city, in in terms of the city. City is in no liability whatsoever. Um, it's an annual appropriation, so, yeah.
Just kind of simplify terms how it works out. You have the value of the property as it is today, since there's a house and a barn and a silo and a whole lot of farmland right now. You have its property value today, and then once it starts developing, presumably, good things will happen, so the value of the property would go up. So you would have the increment, the increase, so then you'd have that area between the two. That's what would get passed back to the developer, is the the city, the and the county would still get that base as it is today. It's just the extra added gets put back to the developer and some to the city to help pay for the infrastructure to get the project off the ground, cause as anyone that probably is working on projects now know that infrastructure costs are very unpredictable and very expensive, so this is the economic development tool to get projects happen that generally wouldn't otherwise, just because there is that cost that is so high just to start.
Kind of the but-for test. It wouldn't happen but-for a TIF kinda deal, so.
So Patrick, um, just to make sure that I understand, the rest of us understand, uh, we don't do these very often, so.
Correct. This is the ninth one for the city.
State law requires that it goes through a board like this, and it's a two-step process, and then it also goes to city council, correct?
Correct.
Um. And I, my understanding, our role in this is more from the zoning side of things, not necessarily whether we agree to the tax deferment and and all of that. That's more of a city discussion. Our our portion of this review is, does it comply with our zoning ordinance? Correct? It's not up to us to decide. The financial side of this. Because that that is a city.
Council.
Decision, correct?
So I believe so. That's where state law is probably, you would be more expert on how you run that.
The planning and zoning, yes, you are correct, and then it's stuff like where the notices sent out to the entities, um, the zoning, all that stuff, so yes, I'd be correct.
Uh, so there's an expiration date on the TIF.
Yes, yes, TIF, no TIF can go longer than twenty years from.
Twenty years maximum.
Yep, twenty years, yep.
If a property is put into a TIF, are they able to, I don't know that, I don't see that there would be a reason to rezone anything here, but does it limit their ability to rezone then if it is locked into a TIF?
Potentially, since it, maybe not. You're shaking your head no.
It shouldn't matter. No, it doesn't change anything at all there.
If they were to take the R two and downzone it or upzone it to R one.
Yeah.
Would that take it out of the?
Yeah, economic development, the classification that Department of Revenue puts on it is very broad. You can do a lot of different things with it, so that's probably, that's definitely one of the parameters there, so.
And I don't see that there would be a reason to change anything.
Right.
I was just wondering if that was something that would affect that, but I don't see that. I don't know why they would rezone, but things things happen, so.
Well, if 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 it was classified as affordable housing and there was no commercial aspect, then we'd have to be at that three eighty-five or less. South Dakota housing's first-time homebuyer limit there, but that's just not the case here. We have a commercial aspect and whatnot, so.
Did you have something you wanted to add, Steve, or you're good? Did you have something you wanted to add?
I was just, yeah.
I saw you stand up, so.
Yeah, so it, yeah, and you're on it already, so you kinda answered my thought, but it it's it got rezoned, I don't know, in February or whatever, so the whole property's been rezoned, and you know, we've we've locked in a plan. We've submitted DEPs. We're getting those approved right now, so we're nine tenths of the way across with what we've got going here for a plan, so um we're we're in it to see it through to the end.
And so whatever uh motion we make is a motion to recommend to the city council.
I would make a motion to recommend the TIF to the city council. Totes?
I'd bring all second.
Okay, we got a motion and second to recommend the TIF number nine for River Park Edition. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Alright. Go tipping, guys.
Thank you.
Alright, discussion item, we've got the building permits, and then we are um adjourning. Do I need, I always forget, do I need a motion to adjourn planning and zoning?
Yes.
Okay, so we need a motion to adjourn planning and zoning so we can go to Board of Adjustment.
Tote so moved.
No, I'm second.
Motion and second to adjourn planning and zoning. All in favor? Closed? Alright. And we will call the meeting of Board of Adjustment to order. A roll call, same members are here. Can you have a motion to approve the agenda, please? Bassett, I'll motion to approve. Motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor? Okay, closed? Alright, moving on to a variance application on Split Rock Boulevard. Patrick.
So this variance application concerns seven oh eight through seven twenty-four. Basically, if you divide it up, it is this lot shown behind you. So the way it is laid out currently, your front yard is off of Split Rock. The south side of the property would be a side yard, north side would be a side yard, and the side on the east would be considered the rear yard. In between this lot and redwood is the city's drainage ditch. So nothing will be built there because it is the city's drainage ditch. So talking to Mr. Reed, he didn't have an issue with it. If it comes up, and I think he's talked through this with Lee and TJ, there are parking lot lights located on the city's property. We are fine and and in the process of granting them an easement on that with them. It's up, it's on all, it's on them entirely to take care of them and maintain them and everything. We're just giving them the space. I think there's an easement to work out for sewer as well, but this concerns the variance. They are looking to. If they potentially subdivide the lot and add an additional building behind it to the east, and obviously, a business would need parking. Currently, our ordinance does not allow you to have parking spaces in the side yard setback. The side yard setback, it that would be the south property line, so they are seeking permission to allow parking spaces in the side yard setback that without the city's drainage ditch would be a front yard, but the city's drainage ditch is there, and in the front yard, you can park in the setback.
I'm supposed to follow all that? Hi TJ.
Hi.
Introduce yourself for the microphone.
Uh TJ Barthman, uh ten sixteen South Nicholas Avenue uh in Brandon here. This property, um, the one that's existing right now, seven hundred seven oh four North Split Rock, Lee and I purchased that back in March. And it's the old Dr. Scouin and Dr. Jubba building uh on the corner there. If you've drove by, you've seen, we've done a pretty extensive remodel to that building. Um, parts of it on the inside, we brought all the way down to the studs. Um, we're doing an internal or a uh external um remodel right now. We did add additional tenant as well. Um, Fit for Life Chiropractic has currently moved in. They're operating uh the whole bottom floor. The upstairs, we have a new tenant coming in um for for uh commercial as well. So what we're doing now is, you know, we're kinda looking to develop, as Patrick was saying, the the lot to the east is roughly about twenty-five thousand square feet. Um, and speaking with Brian, um, as Patrick was alluding to, we're getting that park, the parking lot uh lights kind of extended down there on the south side of that, so they line up, and then the parking lot is what uh we're here to discuss tonight, so they line up with the lights um in the existing parking lot, so. We do have Jake from DJR here kinda walk through some of that on on why and how that works too, so.
Just for the record, when TJ referred to Brian, he's referring to Brian Reed, not Brian on the board.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, as TJ mentioned, my name's Jake Morris with DJR Engineering. Uh, we've been helping Lee and TJ out on this one. Um, you know, trying to find a good use of the of the parcel at hand here, um, taking into account the existing structure and parking lot that exists there. Um, that's posed a little bit of challenges, but we feel that we've uh got a pretty good layout. Um, I uh, Lee had had passed around um a packet there. The first page is the exhibit that I believe was included in your agenda packet, so nothing new there. Um, the following two pages are just some recently taken aerial photographs um via drone. Uh, those kinda show some of the work that TJ had mentioned has taken place on the existing building, and will give you a better perspective of of the parcel and surrounding area. And then the last page there is a um message, email, if you will, from the uh post office here in town, um, just um indicating their their support of of how we're laying the site out. Uh, we've tried to be as proactive as possible with having as as many of those conversations and coordination coordination pieces on the front end um to alleviate issues on on the back end, and and what that post office message is alluding to is a relocation of the current mailboxes that exist um right at the entrance off of Split Rock Boulevard um to more of an interior uh location, um, and them having the adequate space to um to maneuver their their uh delivery vehicle. Um, the the concept at large, um, like I mentioned, you know, we were having to work around the existing um building and and parking lot. The logical and feasible way to do that was an extension of the parking lot along the um property, parallel to how it exists today. Uh, with that came the comes this request to allow the parking in that side yard setback, which is more or less the south property line of this of this parcel. That would be a continuation of how it exists on the west half. Due to the existing building, the way it is, we're not able to uh feasibly realign the the parking aisle um on that western portion, and doing so on the east side would create a a jog in the parking aisle, um, you know, creating safety concerns for um sightlines being obstructed and vehicles backing out um into a jog parking aisle. The area in the middle of those buildings, uh, kinda that turnaround, um, that's been specifically laid out to allow for fire truck maneuverability. Um, we took special care to that, knowing that this is a singular access to this parcel due to the south and east boundary being the drainage. due to the south and east boundary being the drainage, drainage way, um, wanting the, fire trucks to be able to, um, feasibly move around in there. Um, that's a pretty straightforward standard that we follow there, and, um, this, this concept as is, meets those standards. So, um, lots of easements to, you know, kind of lay in this parcel, as you can see, and, um, as I mentioned before, we feel we have a good use of the space that, uh, serves a good purpose. So happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
I'm confused by the application. Let me get back to that here, so. This application basically is talking about the existing tract, is that correct?
That's.
There's no, there's no, there's no plan to subdivide the back lot into a separate parcel? That's not listed in here in the application?
The, the application would be, the parcel's not subdivided now, it, it exists as one parcel. So the, the application is specific to the, the parcel at large and, and the southern boundary of that with the expectation that upon, uh, a subdivision, that would carry over into the, you know, the parcel that would, would follow, um, during a, a subdivision plan.
Right, but the application talks about a, treating this as a single lot. But the drawing shows this as a proposed second lot, so to me, that's two different things.
So it, it only exists as one legal description right now, so, you know, without having the, the final plan and, um, you know, knowing, you know, having those recorded legal descriptions, we're not able to specify more than what exists today on the legal description. Um, and, and, and maybe I defer to Patrick, if, if, if what I'm saying works, that, that we could apply it to the existing parcel at whole and, and it would, that would carry over to a newly subdivided parcel. I, I guess I.
Yeah, Mike, follow my thought process here. So right now, we're only talking about the south property line. But if the intent is in the future to subdivide this, now we have issues with rear setbacks and parking in the rear setback and side setbacks and parking in side setbacks. So I don't want to get the cart ahead of the horse here, we only talk about one, one property line. But yet, the intent is to subdivide this, and then we've got additional issues coming down the road. And what I'm talking about here is if we subdivide this and we create a sub lot B on the back of the property, now the front property has illegal parking because there are parking in the rear yard setback. And if we're calling parcel B, the south property as the front property line, then that also would have illegal parking in the side yard based on this plan that we're looking at right now.
So, so your concern here is, is that the, the definition of what's considered the front side yard setback can and may change upon a.
When we, when we, when we subdivide it between A and B.
Correct.
We now create setbacks, and both of these parcels have parking right up to that property line.
I, I do believe that the, as shown here with lot A and lot B, um, because the access easement is on the west side of lot B, the front yard, um, of lot B would still be that western property line, which would lend itself towards that south property lines being still remaining the side yard. Um, that's the indication we've gotten from, um, a few conversations with staff thus far. But yes, uh, certainly a, a unique scenario with the, with the, um, just having the one front yard and surrounded by the city. And to your point, you know, that the true frontage is on the south side, but that's not considered the front yard setback because of the.
But in, in the, in the new, in the new layout, that becomes a rear yard right there, yes. This is going to be parking in the rear setback. This will be parking not just in the side setback, but the front setback. So we, the question doesn't answer this, this part of this question, so. Cause you have a rear setback that doesn't have, isn't addressed.
Yeah, you, you, you know, there'll be, excuse me, there'll be a access easement through that. Um, you know, I guess I, I've, um, I, I do understand the question a little better now. Um, I, I feel that there's several instances of, of scenarios like this where, you know, with a shared parking, um, approach, if you will, that, you know, the, you know, the property lines may, may be split, or, you know, even in the, in the case of a strip mall, you know, you have shared common property, you know, building laws that are property lines. However, it is, it, you know, it's one continuous parking lot. There's not a fourteen foot gap in, in the parking lot in those scenarios. But that's the approach we're, we're going for here, is that, um, shared parking aspect, um, I, in this scenario.
Did you have something to add, Lee?
Lee Skelling, two oh four Elm Circle, answering Brian's question, that is kind of taken into consideration on lot B. Potential, that's that twenty-five foot setback from the front yard. So in my discussions with Patrick, uh, in the past is, is that the current west, which is facing Split Rock, would be the front yard of lot, proposed lot B. And that's why that building is set back twenty-five foot, since we can't put a building in a twenty, there's a twenty-five foot setback, and that's what Jake has got drawn all the way around there, where you see the five si- side yard, rear yard and so on setbacks. Does that answer your question, Brian?
In our discussions, we have talked about the, so lot B, the west part of that being the front yard, because every lot has to have a front yard, because the front yard determines every other yard. And this is a interesting situation for that. There, there is things that would still need to be overcome. My understanding, talking to Lee and TJ, is the parking on the south part of the property that would be the side yard setback basically is the linchpin that drives this. So at this stage, that, in order to see if this works, that's kind of what they're looking for. Yes, well, we, we will have to come back and solve other issues, but that's kind of the, the thing to decide if this layout is feasible or not. So, uh, not to speak for them, and they can certainly do that, but that seems to be kind of our discussion that the, this layout does not work unless they can have parking as shown in the side yard setback on lot B.
So is this lot going to be addressed Redwood then? Like, just said one hundred.
It would be Split Rock, because that would be the frontage, even though it's off of, it's not connected to Split Rock.
And why are we calling that the frontage then, the south part?
The west part.
Yeah, that, yes.
Because that would be where the access is.
But the variance request is for the south, the south line, correct? No?
They're calling it a side yard and asking for parking in the side yard.
As if it were a frontage.
As, and there's, yeah, there's some in there where they're, but. And then going back to that twenty-five foot setback on the possible lot B.
But it says, right, it says, "South property line would be front yard except for drainage ditch." If parking is allowed in front yard setback. So they're calling, to me, it's calling the south side. No, you're saying if, if, if the drainage wasn't there, that would be the front. So that's kind of the hardship, they can't have that as the front, the front is the west side. It would be the south side, but the drainage is there, so they can't have it as a frontage. Yeah, so, that's, I mean.
What we're asking for here is, is on the south side where it's labeled seven foot setback to allow, allow parking in that. That's seven foot's based on it being considered a side yard.
Okay, so it's marked here as they want seven feet and without the variance, that would have to be how far instead of seven?
It, so you would be able to park up to the property line here? If, with the variance, if not, then they would have to jog that back seven feet. So you would have lot A, and then it would go back seven feet, and then they could put parking there. But based on parking requirements, they would be limited in building size and what could be accommodated in the buildings because of parking.
Correct.
From a, from a reality standpoint, nothing will ever be built on that parcel to the south. So when you think about this in, in simple terms, that south property could basically be a drainage easement. When, when you, when you look at the big picture, just, you know, right now, yes, it's, it's, it's city.
Oh, this?
No, the, where the, where the drainage is, yeah. It's no different than if that was a drainage easement and they owned everything down to Redwood. Nothing will ever be built there, um, and our, our ordinance is to protect neighbors, right? So when you look at it in the big picture, nothing will be built there, there's always going to be a drainage easement there. If we eliminate the drainage easement, nothing's going to be built there anyway, because it's too small. The, the city would probably try to sell it to these guys or something. So I have no problem with, with the way the application's written. I start to run into problems with this as an attachment to the application, because I see some other issues with, with this layout. So if I look at just what's written in the application and disregard this, I'm okay with it. I, I don't want, I don't want to approve the application, what's written there, and assume that this is okay.
So I, to that point, I just like to add that, you know, this is a high level concept that needs a lot more energy embedding through city staff, commission, council, et cetera. Um, so I, to Brian's point, you know, all, all we're asking for is the variance on the south side, the way the application is written. This concept, um, is, you know, it, it may change, you know, certainly from a building layout perspective, et cetera. Um, you know, this was just to provide some context as to, you know, what this may or could be.
City staff would not consider the granting of a variance to be an approval of the site plan.
So Brian, based on what we have in front of us in the variance application, you're okay with that as long as it doesn't include all of this preliminary information?
I think this, can we kind of look at the hardship is similar to that lot that we gave the variance on with the storage buildings. They're, they're off of the main road, and so the reasoning for the setbacks doesn't apply to that property because they don't have the advantage of the frontage. Um, but they, so to be held to the same setbacks that give benefit to other people, whatever, for, for a property, this is a similar property, it doesn't have the advantage of, of a frontage along Redwood, um, but they're still being held to setbacks, treating it as a side yard. So I, I think it's, it's very in line with, with that last property that we gave the variance to. We, we need to be a little careful because this is very similar to the, um, Horizon Pet Care variance that we denied a few months back. Where they had, they had a park, they had a parking lot and driveway that went right down their east property line, and they wanted to extend that farther back into their rear yard, and we made them offset that and maintain that seven foot. Now, where I see this being different is they will, this property will never have a neighbor. Whereas that particular application, there is a neighbor, and the point of our ordinances is to protect neighbors, so.
So the hardship would be the, the shape and location of the parcel?
With the drainage ditch there. And I, I hundred percent agree, I think the difference between this and Horizon is if there was any other adjacent property there that could be buildable in any way, it would, it would probably be a no, but that's not the case. This is not, they're not next to any buildable property there. So the reasoning for the denial or the adjustment that we have for Horizon isn't, isn't there on this property. Well, the, the intent of a setback is elbow room, basically. So we're not building one building right next to another building. But with, with that easement there, or not easement, but with the drainage way there, nothing will ever be built there, so. I don't know if it's a hardship, because it's, it's, it's how they're, how they're developing the property. It's not, I don't think it's a parcel imposed hardship, it's an intent to develop it.
So what would go on the variance form for the hardship? We have to fill that out.
If there has to be a hardship, I, I can't see one. But does it meet the intent of the code? Yes.
Well, staff has to fill out the form, so.
Well, I've heard the terms, "shape of lot," "adjacent to the drainage way." Does somebody want to expand or contract from that?
Or in some ways, where even if we gave them that variance, we're still holding them to a higher standard than a lot of other properties. If, if there wasn't the drainage ditch there, and they had Redwood as a frontage, then they wouldn't have to have the twenty-five foot setback on the west side of that property between the two properties. So we're, we're still holding them to a higher, higher setback than a lot of properties that would be somewhat comparable if that drainage ditch wasn't there. Right, but what if this parcel was two hundred feet farther north? Right now, because it's somewhat close to Redwood, we're starting to create in our mind that Redwood is a frontage. It's not. If this parcel was farther north, Redwood would not play into this as, as a frontage. So Patrick? We have to have a, we have to have a hardship in order to approve a variance, is that correct?
Correct.
I'm just looking at the form. C is unnecessary hardship, and then there's D. "Literal interpretation of the zoning provisions deprives the applicant of the following rights, um, commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district." Could you make an argument under that? That one with the parking, because they're not getting the benefit of the frontage?
No, they could just make their development narrower.
I know you guys compared it to a previous product that I'm not privy to that also had some existing, um, parking areas. But I can say with certainty from a, a engineer's perspective laying the site out, the, the, uh, ex, location of the existing building and, and, and parking within the parcel definitely made it a lot harder for us to do this. Um, and, you know, it's a perceived hardship in my eyes. Um, you know, we're having to conform what, to what exists there today, um, and not able to have the free will of a barren undeveloped parcel like, uh, most instances would. So, you know, that coupled with the, you know, previously mentioned, uh, parcel irregularities and, 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 you know, being adjacent to the drainage channel. parcel irregularities and, 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 you know, being adjacent to the drainage channel is, you know, really kind of the reason for the request to make this project feasible.
Well, it's, I, 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 I can differ to that. You're trying to put a lot on a small piece. So right now, as I see the attachment, there's four pink rectangles. You could take off those two south pink rectangles, keep the two north ones, eliminate that south road parking, make it green, and run parking along the north side of that access drive. And still meet the code. I think what's happening is, is you're trying to get as much, maximize as much square footage of the site as possible, which every developer wants to do. I, I totally understand that.
You know, and part of that too was, you know, we ran scenarios of, you know, of going all the way east on there. With the shared parking aspect of this development, um, you know, the, the parking's going to favor kind of the west side. Um, so not trying to, um, you know, make it unreasonable for patrons to, to transverse their way across a parking lot to the, to the business that, that they're visiting. Um, certainly came into play as there as well, you know. Wasn't just a, um, efficiency numbers layout, if you will, but, you know, definitely put some thought into the flow function and safety of, um, how this will function upon completion.
Does anything under H fit where it says exceptional, extraordinary circumstances that apply to the property, but don't apply to other properties? Just trying to find if there's any wiggle room in any of these, um, various options. Topography?
Yeah, I think there's some uniqueness to this lot and its placement with that drainage there. And I think that, you know, this is probably, doesn't need to be said, but I, I don't think we need to necessarily confer and agree on a hardship. If someone makes a motion and states what they feel, the person that makes a motion states that, then people can agree or disagree with that with their vote, of course, that's. Um, but we, we know that's part of it, that hardship does have to be stated.
Or would there be some, um, conditions limiting it that would make it more palatable, so to speak?
Would it be possible for the applicant to acquire that city land? And come to an agreement with the city? I mean, keep, keep that area as an easement? What would that do? That would basically give them that whole drainage way as their setback.
I mean, we, we can talk to them about anything, but I, I imagine the city council, I mean, barbs one vote on that. The city administrator and maybe the city engineer probably would not be too in favor of conveying the drain, drainage ditch to property owner vote. I mean, we can talk about it.
Yeah, I don't know how many, like, private utilities run through there. We have a water main. I know we were going to give them electrical easement along that end, so I don't know if it's like exchange seven feet somehow. It, it's possible, but there'd be a lot of discussions that need to be had first.
I guess they could still have an easement there that they couldn't build on, so it wouldn't necessarily change the use of the property, but I'm not saying.
The property would have to change hands.
Yeah.
If, if we have to find a hardship, I can't, I can't find a hardship.
If this property, the property B, let's pretend that property A isn't there and Split Rock is right there. Would they, they'd still have to have a front setback, but they would be able to configure things differently because they would have a full frontage for parking and moving things around. I don't know that they would, I don't know that they would gain anything if they were right up against Split Rock. So I guess my, my point is the way it's currently set up with the access and everything, are they, are they losing anything by being setback? You kind of hear what I'm saying? So hypothetically, if, if their frontage of that road was right up against Split Rock.
If I could comment on that, sorry to interrupt you there. Um, you know, it, um, part of that is, you know, if our frontage was along of, you know, the portion in B, which is called Lot B for the purpose of this exhibit, was adjacent to a right of way, you know, we would have the flexibility to control our access point within the bounds of the standards, you know, so far from prop lines, et cetera. In this scenario, our, our access point is where it is, that, that, that parking aisle, uh, is where it is. We, you know, we're, we're not able to change that due to the location of the existing building. Um, so that is, you know, limiting our, our options, if you will, on the, on the concept and layout of what we're calling proposed Lot B is, is our access point is, we're married to it, I guess, for lack of a better term. So that, that's the one thing that comes to mind when you talk about i- if, if Lot A didn't exist, uh, we, we would be able to adjust that access point, which would presumably be farther north. So that way the, you know, the parking would stay out of that.
Right, but by, by creating and selling off Lot B from Lot A, you're creating your own hardship. It's not, it's not, it's not something that the land did. It's something you're doing because you're trying to sell off a part of your property. That's, that to me is a self-imposed hardship.
Yeah, that's, yeah, you know, obviously, you know, we're not, um, it's not feasible to eliminate the, what exists today. Um, we're just trying to find a use for, for the remaining use of that parcel as it's only, you know, 40% or less used at this point.
How does it change it if the, the word Lot A and Lot B don't exist? And we just want to extend the parking lot? We have no intentions of selling this lot. You know what I mean as a?
Go back to the Horizon Peck here. We made them jump over to back, to get back over. That's what we made them do.
And they were next to a business and not a drainage ditch, though, right? That's, I, I think that's our hardship, I guess, is it's just a unique piece of property. I, I don't know if with the definitions. I, I think if we Googled it long enough, hardship would say unique somewhere, you know? It's just, I don't know.
Something that Brian said makes sense to me. If, if there was less building, there'd be more room for the parking.
Parking doesn't get us tax money.
Megan, I agree completely with you on that. Um, but again, I think we're getting hung up on, on, on the purple buildings or pink buildings. Guys, it, it literally could be one of those four buildings. We don't know. We're, we're just trying to give you an idea.
You showed us what it could possibly be.
Well, it could be green space too.
Well, it could be, but now you showed us that you're looking this way to.
So if I color those green, then we're good? I mean, you, all, all we're asking for is that south parking lot gets extended across.
No, I understand what you want.
To stay even with what's there.
No, it makes sense.
Instead of jogging up and having a, a major safety.
You go back to the hardship, though. There's no hardship. That's the problem. We're okay with it. We're okay with it. It's the hardship. We can't prove what we're buying by the government.
Yeah, we, we've had a lot of people come in asking for variances. Whether they want, whether they want to extend their garage farther back on their property, but their garage is too close to the, to the, to the, um, property line. And we, we, we repeatedly have had to keep denying it. Because, simply because you want to extend what's wrong is not a hardship. Something that's currently incorrect, you know, simply because you want to continue to extend that farther back into your property does not constitute hardship. And so if we do it in this situation, then we have to allow it in every other situation.
Okay, so every other situation that comes in with the city drainage ditch? You, you can use this example.
Take the drainage ditch out of there.
But that's our hardship. That's why we can't take it out of there.
That's not a hardship. That's a benefit to you. That gives you openness. It gives you visibility to Redwood. It's not a hardship. If there, there, if there was a building on there.
But I think that's what you said earlier. That, that was the, when you started to go down that road was the idea, the, the idea behind the, the setbacks is to protect your neighbor. And I agree with you.
Yeah, what I'm.
We don't have a neighbor. We'll never have a neighbor.
I'm saying you don't have a neighbor.
Correct.
So.
So the setback doesn't really make a lot of sense in that situation.
But it's not a har, but it's not a hardship. It's a benefit. The drainage next to you is a benefit. It's not a hardship. In, in my explanation. It's the fact that there will never be a building there.
Which I agree with you there.
Yes, but that's not a hardship. That's a benefit to you, that there's never going to be a building there. Like I said, if we take the same parcel and we moved it 200 feet to the north, the shape of your land is the same, the size of your land is the same, access to your land is the same. But there could be a building next to you. So where is the hardship?
Well, we're not 20, 200, we're not, we're, you, you're, you're asking for a build or a lot that doesn't exist. I don't know.
Right, so how is this creating a hard, how is that open space creating a hardship?
Because we've had to, we've had to sit down and try to figure out a new frontage because we can't use Redwood as a frontage.
That's, that's my point. If this property was 200 feet to the north.
But it's not. So, but it's not. So let's not go down that road because it's not.
Okay, let's not talk about Redwood then.
But that's, that, that's how when we first started this whole thing, that's what it was about, was that when this was developed and you look at where the city had, or where the water line is, where, where all that is, it comes off of Split Rock, Redwood being what should be a frontage, but is not because it comes off of Split Rock. So we, you, like Lee said, if you probably Google it, you come up with unique somewhere in there. But that's, that's the hardship is we're, we're trying to develop a lot that the city has a concrete drainage ditch on one side of it. We have one access point and we can only have one access point. We can't come from any other direction. So there's a hard, hardship is we're, we're trying to extend, we're trying to grow, we're trying to bring more business, but I'm limited because of the city drainage ditch. I'm limited because of one access point. And we're trying to create a new frontage, which is on the west side as we were talking with, it's, it's on the west side of that property, which is on there as B. Yeah, the, the red line going north and south, which is on the west side, yep. So that would be our frontage. So we're coming off of that 25 feet, which is what Michael was saying. So we're already giving ourselves a 25 foot setback there. We're, we're trying to, yep, it's, it's on the west line, the red line, we're pushed back 25 feet because that's our new frontage. You see where it, where it's at?
So does this have any comparison to the one we had where there was a utility box and we couldn't, they couldn't put the, the, attach the garage because of the utility box? And here we have a drainage ditch? I, I, I don't know. Is that any comparison? We just did that.
On that particular project, they, they would have been allowed to widen their driveway farther than what it was now. But they couldn't because the utility box was there. It wasn't their utility box. It was someone else's utility box.
And I'm saying that here, changing the, the, um, giving them this variance on this frontage because it can't be, I don't know all the terminology, but because of the drainage ditch, isn't that the same sort of a hardship that they had? They couldn't work around that? I don't know.
I thought of that too, because in, in that case, we talked about the fact that they could have, they, if not for that, uh, what do we call it? Transformer or utility box, that they could have built something onto their existing garage without even, with just a building permit and staff. So that's.
That assumes that this was a corner lot. It's not a corner lot. That's, that's my point. This is not a corner lot. We, we, we talk about it like it is a corner lot, but it's not a corner lot. It's a long, narrow lot.
Well, my suggestion would be that somebody make a motion and, uh, one way or the other and see where the chips fall, unless there's more discussion.
There's a lot of ifs, but if the drainage ditch weren't there, the lot would probably go out to Redwood. Then it would be a corner lot. Then they could ask for a second driveway going out for Red, to Redwood. But it's not.
We'd probably prefer it's anything but a drainage ditch, to be honest with you. It's just, it, a drainage ditch, you know, obviously there's no feasible way or, you know, practical way to do anything other than convey drainage to that parcel. If there was a neighboring parcel that, you know, was, uh, you know, neighboring business or, um, you know, anything of that nature that you would have the ability to work with your neighbor and, you know, do something along those lines. In this case, it's not. I mean, it's, it's one of the worst neighbors I can think of, but that's subjective, as is a hardship.
Are there any staff comments on this? Don't all be chicken.
Nope. So it does say under F1, unnecessary hardship must be established by the applicant who applies for the variance. An unnecessary hardship refers solely to the, the particular physical condition of the property, not any personal or self-inflicted hardship of its, to its owner, financial or otherwise. The hardship must be substantial enough compelling force, not merely for reasons of convenience or profit. So an unnecessarily, an unnecessarily hardship must be established. So that is a requirement that you all find that. So that seems to be where your struggle is. So if you, if you do have a motion, my instruction to Paul is have it be a roll call vote, just so we're clear on that. But we do need you to show an unnecessarily hardship. And that has to be the particular physical condition of the property, however you define that to be.
This is Brooks. No, I'm able, I'll make a motion to approve the variance citing the hardship of the south, south property line being near to Redwood, but not actually having frontage because of the drainage ditch that's between them. And the, when I was looking at item D, you know, I would, I'll state that there, this property would be denied the ability to have a second entrance, which many businesses in a similar situation could, could enjoy. And they do not have that. So I would make that motion to approve.
Tote second.
Okay, we've got a motion in the second for the hardship described. We will do a roll call. Please, Paul.
Megan?
Aye.
Brian? Brooks?
Aye.
Rob? Alyssa? Michael?
Aye.
A four to two is a two-thirds, so it is an approval.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate the time, everybody.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Is that it? I lost my agenda. Is that it for, what's on the agenda?
That is the end of the agenda.
Okay, so do we have a motion to be done?
Totes move.
Okay, motion second to adjourn. All in favor? Post? Yep, thank you. Okay, thank you. Thanks.
We are adjourned at eight o'clock.
I said city council is a lot easier.